What was gonna say has already been said. Um, and I've been praying and just thinking because I know you're in a difficult position. And I don't wanna pretend like it's just cut and dry, it's real simple, because it's not But I find it very ironic tonight that a law or a bill or whatever that was passed puts each one of you in a situation that you're being bullied. If your grandma and your grandpa were sitting beside you tonight, there wouldn't be a thought of what you would do. Richmond is trying to bully you. Esther in the Bible had a choice. She was brought into the kingdom for such a time as this. I do not believe it's an accident that you, each one of you, have worked your whole lives to get to the position that you're in, this position. Is it an easy position? No. Do I envy you? No. But I beg you, please, please do not pass this agenda. It's political, as Pastor Ray said, it's not ethical, it's political. And you know it in your heart. Do what's right for Augusta County. Do what's right for our kids. Do what's right for your moral compass when you lay your head on your pillow at night. Thank you again.
Okay, Sam Harris. Sam Harris and on deck will be Terrence Williams. Terrence Williams.
Hey, good evening. So, uh, thanks for being on the board. That's a heavy mantle that you guys wear. You have a lot of lives, uh, that you're responsible for, a lot of educations. Uh, reading this, by the way, and the sheer amount of stuff that you guys read, it's incredible. You know, and, uh, my wife asked me, she's like, "What are you gonna say when you go?" I said, "You know, I don't really have anything to say because this doesn't have any answers. It's half-baked." You know, it's got the lines of the ramrod on it where it's just kind of shoved through. It's very politi-- excuse me, it's very political, but it doesn't actually have any clear-cut recommendations for administrators to pursue. And I found it very interesting. It's almost like this was kind of pushed out and it was bombed, and you guys are the ones who are dealing with the shrapnel, but there's not a whole lot of actual actionable items. And I know you take a lot of this stuff very personally. I know, talking with Dr. Bond, you know, about even something as simple as school closing, there's a lot of other things that go into it besides what's on the surface. I get that. I'm just really concerned about the actual application of what this says and what it looks like. I really don't have any statement, I just have questions, a lot of questions that aren't being answered. And I feel like what we want to hear as a community is, what does this mean every day when our kids go to school? And I got four kids, and one of them, the youngest, isn't in school yet, the other three are. And I pray for them, and I pray for the schools and the teachers. I just have so many questions that don't have answers. I know you guys don't have answers yet either, but I just really am concerned by how half-baked this is. You know, in politics, a lot of times you get something and, uh, you know, we don't know what to do, we're gonna kick it down the can and let somebody else figure it out, right? And I'm not saying that that's what this is, but there's something here that needs to do more refinement, alright? I feel like we have an opportunity to say to the people who passed this, this isn't a law passed, this is a list of recommendations, but it doesn't have any actionable items. You expect, you know, the state expects the boards to put this into action, they haven't really given you enough of a roadmap to make that happen. It's just my thoughts.
My name is Terrence.
This is Paige Cash.
My name is Terrence Williams and I live in Sioux Drap. I'm the father of four, three of which have graduated from Sioux Drap High School, and my son will be a rising senior this year. I don't have to, uh, I don't have to tell you tonight my ethnicity, you don't have to guess it because you didn't listen. And I'm the proud son and grandson of people who did not go to school with you guys because of the color of their skin. And I find it, I know it's not your doing, so I'm just making a statement, that I find it appalling that we would equate sexual choice as a civil right as my race. I find it appalling. You guys said, and it's been said before, "In God we trust." You take that pledge of allegiance into the, into the, uh, to the, uh, I can't remember. "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We say all those things because our founders, our founders had a moral compass. Did they get it right? Obviously not. They were slaves. We obviously didn't get everything right, but our morals were right, and we eventually got it right. What you're doing is you're opening up kids to go to bathroom with someone that's not the same sex as them. And I can speak for a lot of my, um, guys that I went to school with. If this law were in place in the eighties, you don't think, you don't think I'd be tempted to say, "Well, I feel like a girl this week." And I'm gonna go in there and catch a peek. You're letting the wishes of a few rule the majority. And that's never right. You must do what you are charged to do, which is the, which is education, Dr. Bond, education. You are the Department of Education, not the Department of indoctrination. What you are, what you, what you don't know that you're doing is you are reframing the thinking patterns of these children. They have a new normal, not by their choice, it's been forced upon them. I see a lot of gray hair on this panel. This was not the America that you grew up in. This was not the America that you went to school in. And I, I do not believe any of you sitting here wants to go along with this. I really can't believe that. I really refuse to believe it, and I hope you prove me right.
Mr. Cash and Mr. Warren Cash, please, one deck.
My name is Paige Cash, I live in Augusta County. Um, I've been here several times, I'm a familiar face unfortunately here, speaking to the school board. I don't have a speech today, um, I don't have anything to say, I haven't heard a hundred times from people in the room. Um, other than, you know, as an adult, I have lots of friends that are gay, lesbian, even transgender. I don't care who you love, I don't care who you identify as, I don't care who you wanna be when you grow up, that's fine. What I do care is when you're pushing it onto our children. My son is seventeen, he's gonna graduate from school next year, this is really not a problem for him, I'm not worried about him. I'm worried about the people in this room who have little children. They don't know what their gender is, nor do they care. If you're not preaching it and teaching it to them, they have no concept. Boys have a penis, girls have a vagina, that's how you separate it. Somebody earlier said that he understands it's a difficult decision, it's not. It's a very cut and dry decision. Boys have a penis and they use the boys' bathroom, girls have a vagina and they use the girls' bathroom. If there is a certain person who is struggling with that, then you can deal with that on a case by case, but to force this on children starting all the way in kindergarten and first grade is insane, is absolutely insane. You are opening up, and I'm not even concerned about the transgender children who are, who are really having a, a, whatever you wanna say, trying to decide who they wanna be. That's not what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the children who don't have a good home life, the children who are being sexually abused at home, who are the, who are the prey for these adults becoming the predators in our schools, because that's what you're opening the door for. It can't happen. Um, and I heard another gentleman here tonight say that he, he really doesn't envy you, and I certainly don't want your seat, but I will say that if you don't stand up for our children and do what's right for our children, there are a lot of people out here that will. And I don't care how much money it costs, you can't put a monetary value on our children. There is no monetary value. I don't care about state funding, I don't care about federal funding, I don't care. You need to do what's right for our children.
Mr. Cash, Warren Cash, and then Jeremy Nance, I think it is, I'm sorry, but, uh, Jeremy, if you'll be on deck.
Hello, everyone, sure y'all familiar with me? My name is Warren Cash, I'm a resident of Augusta County. I was gonna talk a little bit about the bathroom, but it's been beat, it's been beat up pretty good. And I enjoy it, I enjoy it, and I'm encouraged by it, everybody that came out to share tonight. God's moving.
That's right.
God's moving, okay? And I'm very encouraged by that. I want you to understand that the devil's planting seeds of division. Right now, the devil's trying to create division here, the parents' relationship with you, the board. And it's happening in a lot of other cases, Sheriff's Department, our Board of Supervisors for the county, and I've been to a lot of this stuff, and that's why I have my camera out, and I'm gonna start exposing some things. And I want the community to see what's really going on, because the news is not gonna cover it. And I don't understand why they're not out here covering this issue. Actually, the news packed up in freaking left already. How much do they freaking care? They don't. But the issue I wanna talk about right now is upcoming elections. I want the community and the parents to vote these people into position, to really do your research, pay attention to where campaign funds are coming from. What corporation is putting that money into their campaign? Because there's people that don't have the money to run, and the funds are issued, but there's corporations who will put in a camp, put money into a campaign, put somebody on this board that'll meet the agenda of Richmond, to meet the agenda of the government. And they're here, in Verona, not very far away, and I'm not gonna name names right now, but they're gonna come out, I promise you that. Been fighting it for two weeks, I'm getting more and more knowledge of it, and I'm gonna put it out to the community, so everybody understands what's going on around here in Augusta County, Virginia.
On deck is Candace Hines, Candace Hines.
All right, Jeremy Nance, Augusta County. A lot of stuff I was gonna talk, but I didn't touch on. Uh, I will talk about the critical race theory. It is devised from Marxism, it's created to cause confusion and division based on sex, gender, uh, class, uh, several different things, it's caused to create division. And people are using that to use this gender stuff to further their agenda. Last time I checked, and the Bible says in Jeremiah, "God knew you before He created you into woman." Genesis says, "God created man and woman." So, if that's the truth, according to the Bible, who I believe in, the God I believe in, that means if you're okay with the agenda and ideology, that you can wake up today and say, "Hey, I'm a girl," or "I'm a boy," that's saying that you're a better creator than God himself. So, when you get to that level, you better realize what you're playing with. You're not just playing with dice or games or whatever, it's an eternal salvation level that you're playing with. So, to allow this to enter the schools, in which I know it's not coming from y'all, it's coming from Richmond, but y'all are local elected representatives on a first level to fight Richmond, to stop them from furthering their liberal agenda. So, we're asking each one of y'all to do what's right, uphold the morals, and fight this from day one. If not, like people said, we do have elections coming up, and if you don't wanna support what the majority wants, we're more than welcome to show up at the polls and vote people out, and get people in there that want to stand up for the right, fight the majority of Richmond.
Marcus Sanders, on deck, Marcus Sanders.
I'll be quick, because I know some of you are tired. One of my children attend a county school, and one is scheduled to start this upcoming school year. I shouldn't be worried about a student who thinks it's a girl but is a boy sharing a bathroom, or vice versa. God does not make mistakes. Let that sink in. I am concerned about the rulings on the model for policies on transgender students. I know this has been and will continue to be a political issue. Personally, for me and my family, it's a moral issue and a personal belief. You as the school board, it is your duty to keep my child safe, not just the ones who think they know who they are. After the last year we've had, my children shouldn't have to be worried about who is sharing their bathroom. If these students get a safety net, what about my children? Do my children not meet the criteria of having a safety net now? You allow this, then what else will you allow? This is the beginning of heading down a slippery slope for our schools and our community. It's time for you as our local school board and us as parents to take a stand and do what's right. This is not okay. I'm here to protect my children, to keep them safe. Will you do the same?
Mr. Sanders and on deck is Nikki Puleesi, Puleesi?
Uh, good evening, members of the board, and good evening, we the beautiful people of Augusta County. Thank you for all your support here tonight, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak here on behalf of my family. I'm gonna name a couple, just say a couple of words out there that is unfamiliar to me, but is in your policies: cisgender, gender expansive, gender diverse, gender fluid, gender non-binary, agender, and gender queer. Now, I have never heard any of these terms before 2020. There are two genders, no matter how you divide it, male and female. The rest is just choice. In your policy, it states students may use the bathroom or locker rooms based off the gender they identify themselves as. It sounds like to me you are making a few feel comfortable based off of their own personal choice to make the masses feel uncomfortable. I will not stand by as a parent and let this school district go against my rights and religious beliefs. To accommodate the few that are confused, why should my children, right here, these two beautiful girls, be left behind and made feel uncomfortable just to be politically correct? Sexual orientation should not be the school's responsibility, nor should it be any part of the curriculum. Morals are taught by parents, not indoctrined by you. People's choices are none of my business until their choices affect my family and my community. See, you have three problems here, and I'm a man that wants solutions. Problem number one, transgender boys using lavatory facilities in the presence of my innocent daughters. Problem number two, trans-confused people feel uncomfortable using bathrooms and being made fun of. Problem number three, how will you accommodate my family's religious beliefs and with all these conflicting problems? The endless solution I see is say no to Richmond. Stand up, Augusta County, stand up, school board. And parents, we need to stand up and fight now, like we are this evening, y'all make me so proud, you're beautiful, and we gotta fight, the time to fight is now. Thank you.
I'm an Augusta County resident, I'm a mom of four children, uh, God-given, three beautiful, set of triplets, seven years old, give it a ten, Stewart Strath Elementary. Good evening, the Augusta County School Board, who sit in front of me. I come to you this evening with a heart full of concern, of care, and of love for my beliefs, my home, my faith, my family, and of course, my four children. We have respect and have grateful hearts for the teachers of Augusta County Schools and Stewart Strath Elementary, for them teaching and helping our children to learn the necessary subjects to be able to grow up and accomplish and finish school, things that will help them to, if they so choose to, to go to college or to chase their dreams in other ways, ways to become a great citizen of the United States of America, one that holds their values, stands on their feet, and holds the freedom of their, in their hearts. To our school system, to have our school system force other thoughts and beliefs onto our children saddens my heart. As we all know, the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, we have the right to practice his or her own religion. So if our schools are so bold as to take away our First Amendment rights, what will come next? The very reason we are standing here today, we believe the considerations that the school board are pondering should be halted. The United States Constitution, uh, was to limit the power of the federal government and protect, not grant, the natural rights of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. The thought of allowing anyone the right to use whichever bathroom they please, based off of who they think they are as a person, instead of taking into consideration the one, God, who made them, male or female, as the Bible says, shouldn't that concern you? We as the citizens of the United States need to uphold our rights and beliefs. Will you, Augusta County School Boards, stand? We the people deserve our freedoms, will you be the one to take them from us?
That concludes our list of those who have signed up to speak. At this time--
We got one more gentleman signed up, we need to give him a hand now.
What was his name?
Hi, my name's Justin Nash, I live in Augusta County, I have three children, two of them girls, one boy. I'm here today to mostly address the policy recently from the Virginia Department of Education. Most of what I wanted to say has been said, maybe a little bit more than what I wanted to say has been said. But this policy creates some serious concerns regarding student safety, parental rights, and religious rights. It also puts the school and staff in a position that they have no business being. First off, this policy was written by unelected members of a board, that our community had zero representation on that board. The policy was written almost secretly during a time when most people were stuck at home and worried about their loved ones. It was written at the height of the COVID pandemic, hidden from most people. When this policy was released for public comment, which many didn't know about, including myself, it still received unfavorable opinions at a two-to-one ratio. When policies of law, when policies or law are made with no representation that also negatively impact a people's rights, their interests, that is called tyrannical. At least that's what I was taught it was called in school. This policy will allow a student, regardless of their sex, to enter a bathroom, any bathroom they choose. This policy says it's for transgender rights, but the policy allows any student, and staff are not even allowed to question a student's reasoning or wanting to enter in one of those facilities. This is very alarming. To me, as a parent, it's very personal, for reasons I don't wish to make public right now. But imagine being a young teenage girl who is a victim of sexual assault, maybe she was victimized by a fellow student at one time. Now imagine being her, feeling that fear and anxiety she feels on a daily basis. Imagine those other emotions that she must go through. Imagine how she will feel when, and the thoughts that will go through her head as she changes her clothes, or she showers, and turns her head to see a male student walk in and undress right next to her. We can't allow this. This policy also directs staff to help children identify their gender and to keep it secret from parents. No. That is none of the school's business, period. That is a right that belongs solely to me as a parent and between me and my children. The policy goes on further to direct schools to embrace and push LGBT values. I wanna know why a school is being told to embrace any kind of sexuality with underage children, period. The reason we're here is that this same policy will be later used to allow adult staff to use whatever facilities they may so please, which would further open up the possibility of abuse. To those that may scoff at this, let me ask you, did you ever think we would be here discussing this right now, just a mere few years ago, few months ago? This all is wrong and dangerous. Richmond must be made aware of the dangers they are creating for our children and come up with something better, before a child's life is forever damaged. In closing, I wanna thank you all, I, my time ran out, I had a lot more to say, but I know some of you guys are doing your best. God be with you, let His guidance guide you guys on your decision. Thank you.
I apologize if I didn't let this start up. You would give me a minute, please, sir? My name is Janice White, I'm a resident of Augusta County, I'm also the mother of two children who will soon be entering the Augusta County School System. You gentlemen and ma'am have an important decision to make today after hearing all the Augusta County residents and our concerns. In God we trust is above your head, and you have an important decision to make, but it's actually quite simple. Are you gonna protect the children, or are you gonna give in to the tyranny of Richmond and the governor and what he is trying to pass here and do to our children? In case your moral compass is not working properly, let me tell you about a right that was not talked about today, and that is the Constitution of Virginia, Bill of Rights or Virginia, Section Two, "The people are the source of the power." So in case you need, in case you need some help with what decision that you need to make, all those tonight that came here that are opposed to the bathroom policy proposed by Richmond that is going to harm our children, raise your hands.
Majority. Majority.
Gentlemen, that is the majority. Thank you, and ma'am.
At this time, I want to pour to our board if you have any questions or any suggestions of where we're going with this.
Everybody else, you'll be quiet, sir. I'll, I'll, I will first of all say that I wanna thank all of you guys for coming out tonight. This is what it's all about. You get to express your opinion. It's our duty to try to glean information from what we hear. I learned a lot tonight. I learned a lot from listening to you all, I learned a lot from listening to our attorney, and I appreciate Mr. Young being here tonight. He is the messenger. We hire him to interpret the law, we don't hire him for his personal opinion. I don't care what his personal opinion is, I want him to interpret the law. And some of the things I heard tonight is a little different from what I heard previously, that, not from him, but from other sources. So, uh, I know a lot of you all want us to make a decision tonight. I, I wanted to adjust some of what I've heard. And I want to be able to let other folks-- And I want to be able to let other folks in Augusta County be able to hear what happened here tonight, and also be able to contact us as school board members, be able to evaluate what our attorney said tonight. You know, I believe in making a decision after taking the time to study. I know where my thoughts are. The ones of you in the audience that know me know where my thoughts are. But I want to evaluate all the circumstances. I want to do what's right for all the students in Augusta County. And that is going to require that I do some studying on this. And I don't want to make the wrong decision. That's where I am, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to... It would be my recommendation to the board that we postpone action on this until our August meeting.
School starts in August.
You're welcome to come back.
So what happens when school starts?
The decision will be made before school starts.
Okay.
Here's what the law says. The law says that this decision, this was what comes from Richmond, is that this decision must be...
We know this in the rich...
Well, I'm sorry, sir, but we got two things that we're fighting against each other here tonight. We got moral compasses, and we've got legal compasses.
Moral compass is the right answer.
I appreciate if you listen to me quietly. Could you give me that courtesy? That's all I ask. Our deadline, per Richmond, is by the time school starts, okay? We are one of the very first school boards to have this type of meeting.
If you're gonna stand, now's the time.
The gentleman, here's what I ask you, in a nice way, if someone's gonna go, just let me speak. I didn't interrupt you all and disagree or make counterpoint. We have had to try to balance, in many of the things we do up here, our moral compasses and our legal compasses, okay? We, most of us in this room, most everybody, we are generally law-abiding citizens, are we not?
Not when it comes to parenting.
To God's law? What about God's law?
There's a lot of laws that we've got to consider. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna vote in any way tonight on this issue, and I'll just leave it at that. I've tried, I've tried to answer everybody's email that sent me an email today. I'm more than willing to speak to anyone about this.
May I ask?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Can I ask one simple question? I've been here, this is my first meeting I have ever been attending. I would like to take the time to thank you guys for doing a beautiful graduation ceremony for the seniors this year. I could tell you guys put a lot of time and a lot of effort into that, and I'd like to ask all of you, for us, the people, the parents of the community, to do the same thing that you did for graduation for the seniors this year, that you do the same thing and have the same respect and the same courtesy for this community.
And we've heard that request for the last hour and a half.
Working for this COVID pandemic and putting things in perspective and trying to get things back to normal and doing what I tried to do as a nurse and the oath that I took to become a nurse and do all the right things. But now I have one question for you, not only from my time and my era and growing up, and I'm in my 40s. I grew up old school, old school ways, country girl, morals and values. Pretty sure all these people in here did. So when I went to school, and still now, girls have to have outfits, clothes, skirts, shorts, at a certain length, tops and shirts, not exposing certain things. Now, I'm gonna send you my email, so that I'll put everything in perspective a little bit more, and, you know, respect your time, and everybody's here. But I want you to clarify to me, while we have a law and we have to go by your dress codes for our students and our kids, so that they don't expose too much of their body parts, but yet it's okay to have transgender going only in a bathroom where you're exposing a lot more than just a little extra length and a little thing.
We are trying to balance all the things that you said, the morality part, the legal part. This week, this week, it's a good thing I own, or mostly own my own company, because I would have probably got fired, because I've spent 30-plus hours researching this junk, trying to learn. I learned a lot of stuff tonight, like, just like Mr. Shifflin said. I learned a lot of things. I hear the compassion. I hear the arguments. I want to digest it, just like he did. I don't want to vote on it tonight. I want, no, ma'am, I got the floor.
Oh, my gosh. Wow.
I understand the morality issue. I'm a Christian, okay? Now, don't holler at me. I'm through speaking. I would recommend to this board that we not take action tonight. I'll be more than available to talk to any of you at any time.
Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins, could I respect you?
No, ma'am. I'm sorry, ma'am, but this is not beneficial to anyone. At this point, I'm gonna call for a motion.
It's not beneficial for you.
You don't want to be fired, right? You don't want to go against it, right? It's too much. It's the cost of...
Ma'am. I'll tell you what. I've been on this board 22 years.
That's too long. Too long.
So I'm not intimidated, okay? I'd like to find a good reason to quit anyway, you know? So I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we delay any action on this situation until our August meeting.
The motion has been made. Second to that. Okay, at this time, the motion on the board, and we have the second to that motion. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of not making this decision at this time, which is basically what the motion is, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, like so. Okay. Let me screen you. Studying that position, it has passed. We're not going to make that decision tonight.